Thank you, Chief. I think they got me mic'd up. Well, thank you. It's great to be with you today, and I want to thank the chief and all the people of Public Safety for allowing me to come here today. Because one of the first questions on your mind is, is I did a statewide message yesterday. So why am I in Kalamazoo today? To talk about public safety again. Well, a couple reasons. One is, is I think it's really important to highlight how hardworking the people are that do public safety for a living. And it's important that our citizens recognize there are a lot of good things going on all across the state. So when you give a message on a topic, too often people feel things are bad, they're just difficult, you know, things aren't working right. Well, that's not the case here. We have a lot of good, hardworking people. And the question is, is how do we get them more resources so they can be more successful? And so we wanted to pick a place to really highlight many good things going on across our state in terms of how people can work together. And if you look at, Kalamazoo is a great model for that. Here you have a situation where you have a public safety department, the largest in the United States. And beyond that, you look at a lot of the programs we're talking about in the public safety message, there are lots of those pieces already being worked on and being implemented in a positive way. Things like youth programs. This department has a lot of youth programs working on multiple areas to say, how do you keep our kids out of trouble? How do you create young programs for young people where they can be successful, to go on to have a career in some positive fashion? How do you create recreational opportunities in the summer that they can make sure they have something more interesting to do? And then you talk about community involvement, to stay involved in the community, to have people out walking in communities in terms of public safety people, talking through real neighborhoods and have that dialogue going on. And then how do you do best practices? By collaborating among departments in a broader geography, in terms of best practices, by working with the sheriff's department in other areas. Those are all important things. Because people are working very hard, and it's an opportunity to say thank you again. So I wanted to say thank you yesterday to our hardworking public safety people across Michigan, but I want to do that on this side of the state, too. And to do it in a context of success, where we have more work to do. And that's why I wanted to have the message, is to say, if you look at where we are statewide, we're actually doing about as well as the rest of the United States. But to be open with you, that's not good enough. We can improve. And in particular, we have some communities that have a lot of room for improvement, and we do need to focus on those places. So the message I had yesterday was one of smart justice. And what does smart justice mean? It means taking a comprehensive approach to public safety, to support the hardworking men and women that are on the front lines of doing law enforcement, to recognize law enforcement's critically important, we need to devote more resources, but we need to do other things to help them and to help all of us succeed. So law enforcement's part of it, reforms to the criminal justice system is part of it, and crime prevention is part of it. The best way to deal with crime is to not have it happen. And then you go beyond that to the next year, once you have those three legs established, to say it should be data-driven. And I was talking with the chief about the use of data and about identifying where the issues really are. And that's a focus we need to bring statewide, to understand where our greatest problems are, why those problems are happening, and what we do about them. And then you go to say, now that we've identified the data and we have this program, let's go to where the needs are the greatest. Let's go to the hotspots. Let's go identify those places where we can make the largest difference and make it happen. And so that's what this program's all about. That's what I announced yesterday, is really how to make that combination happen in some comprehensive, thoughtful fashion statewide. And to put it in context, we are going to start with four cities in particular: Detroit, Pontiac, Flint, Saginaw. Because when you look at the crime stats of violent crime, they're roughly about four times as high as the statewide average. And that is unacceptable, regardless of where you live in the state. We need to do something about that. And so that's the prime focus area, but many of the programs I'm talking about are already going to be things that can be used statewide by people, or as we pile with them and get success in those communities, we can apply them to other communities. When we see what's really working well, let's spread it across Michigan. And so let me share a few of those thoughts, and then I really wanted to open for questions and dialogue, so we can have a good discussion about this. Because I really appreciate you taking the time out to come talk about this topic, and I want to thank the mayor for being here, too. In terms of going through the list of topics and the things, law enforcement. One of the first things is, law enforcement shouldn't be an island. It's not just about local law enforcement, state or federal. It's about collaboration, getting everyone to work together at all levels. So one of the things we're doing in this message is saying, let's encourage that. So at the local level, what are we doing? One of the things we're doing is, is last year we created an innovation fund as part of our revision of revenue sharing. We put $5 million in it. We had $23 million of applications for local communities to come forward to say they're going to partner with other communities, and they want one-time funding to make improvements. Well, this year, by setting aside $25 million, we're going to see a big response now, a good response, and have many more resources to help. And as part of that, what I'm asking for is to prioritize at least $10 million of that $25 million towards public safety. And if there's more than $10 million of applications, more than $10 million could go to public safety. So I really encourage your community, Public Safety here, to get with other communities, to come up with your ideas on how you might be able to come up with innovative ideas to use those resources to make it even better. And I think that can make a significant difference. One of the other things is, is because we have this philosophy of going to the hotspots, the real problem areas is, we are going to enhance the Michigan State Police. Hopefully, over the next year, we'll be adding 180 troopers. And one of the benefits there and focus points is, because we're talking about multiple cities and the entire state, is they are the state police. And we'll be able to deploy them where they're in the greatest need, to really focus in on those areas. We got agreement from the federal government, from the FBI and the U.S. Attorney's Offices, on partnering better with us, on deploying more resources in Michigan, and to do it in partnership on how we can collaborate and cooperate the best way. So it's about teamwork. And I think all these things together will make a difference. Then again, to help our local communities. One of the key priorities we heard from CLEAR, a council I created on law enforcement and reinvention, which is composed of local law enforcement, state law enforcement, prosecutors, courts, corrections people, is they came back and said, we need more help on crime lab processing. We have too big a backlog. So in this year's budget, we have $5 million allocated to add 20 scientists to try to get that backlog to 30 days or less. And in addition to that, the state police will be running academies on how to better collect evidence at crime scenes. And we're going to be inviting local jurisdictions to send people to that academy. Because part of it is, is doing a better job of identifying the most important evidence at a crime scene, prioritizing that, getting it to the labs, and getting that tested in some triage fashion. Other resources need to go with this. Resources to do more prosecutions. So we're increasing the Attorney General's budget by $900,000 to partner with local prosecutors on having more resources there. For the four communities in particular, we're going to embed parole officers right in the police departments of those four communities. So they can work in collaboration, cooperation on a daily basis, to say, here are the places of greatest needs and how we can make a difference dealing with parole issues. All these things start adding up in terms of having real value. And that's the part of the law enforcement piece. There are several other elements. Next generation 911 is a discussion point. If you think about it, young people today, how many of them have their video going instead of their phone? And theoretically, isn't there a way someday in the future where they could literally transmit video to public safety to actually show you what may be going on at a scene, to give you even better information than what you can hear over the phone? All good stuff. Then when you talk about criminal justice reform, there are opportunities there. A couple things that are right at the top, and one that's experienced in this area is with drug courts. We're going to enhance the resources we're going to put behind drug courts, because the issue there is, is not about locking someone up, but getting them in a treatment program for substance abuse. And hopefully getting them so they can be a productive member of society and not locked up in some correctional institution. To go with that is the concept now of mental health courts. Because if you talk to almost anyone involved in this field, they will tell you cases that they believe someone has a mental health issue and not necessarily a criminal or corrections issue. And how do we identify those people? And not just identify them, but get them the right treatment to keep them on a better path. Now going back to drugs for a minute, we're making improvements there. I'm going to ask the legislature to give the Department of Health and Human Services more reso-- excuse me, Community Health, the ability to put new compounds on an emergency drug list faster and better. Because right now, we have an issue that criminals are coming up with new drugs so quickly that they're selling them before we can even make them illegal. That's not a good situation. There was a drug recently called K-2 that was out on the streets. It was made illegal, and before you know it, there's another version out there. So how do we keep up with that? But one other thing I'll emphasize, and this applies to all of us, is one area you can help is actually go talk to your doctor. When you go for your physical or you see your doctor the next time, and ask them if they participate in the Michigan Automated Prescription System, MAPS. Only about 35% of our doctors do. Because if you talk to law enforcement, and I heard this from a couple sheriffs in particular as I traveled around, it was about abuse of prescription drugs. And probably the single best tool we have to deal with that is if we can get doctors online and have a central database of what prescriptions are out there, where they're being filled, and look for those cases where someone's taken a prescription and going to eight places and filling it eight times and then selling. So the Michigan Medical Association's part of this, the Michigan Pharmacists, and we just need more docs to sign up. And that's something all of us can have an impact if we simply ask our physician, are you still writing a paper script that none of us can read anyway? Or can you participate in an automated process? So there's a whole list of different things in that area that are important in terms of talking about opportunities there. For the police themselves, we're talking about doing things with video in terms of court appearances. Also, taking in preliminary exams and doing conferences before preliminary exams happen, so we can save officer time. Because I bet if I took a poll of officers here to say, how much time do you spend waiting to appear in a court that could be much better used actually out on the street or working with our citizens? So within the context, and I want to thank the Supreme Court, particularly Justice Young, for being part of this process. We're having discussions at the highest level of how to reform our criminal justice system to make sure we're protecting the rights of our citizens, but are there ways to leverage technology and other tools to do this in a smarter way? This is good stuff. Now you get to the topic of crime prevention. Again, the best way to deal with a crime is not to have it happen. One of the largest elements of this message is $15 million we're asking in the budget for a jobs program. And this is a jobs program targeted at the structurally unemployed. To go talk about the people that have been unemployed for years and years, that may have missing skills. We cannot walk away from these people. We need to work with them. We need to try to help them be successful. And so the Michigan Economic Development Corporation with our local partners all across the state are going to look at something called Community Ventures. And this is about creating sustainable enterprises, to work with organizations like Goodwill, Focus Hope. There are a lot of good organizations that have some track record in this. To say, it's about creating a sustainable job, not a make-work job. This is not about giving somebody a job for six months or a year. My guidance to the MEDC in terms of doing this program is, I said, you need to help build socially, social entrepreneurship enterprises that make at least a dollar a year, even if they're a not-for-profit. Because that means that job will go on year after year. And then how do we put training services on top so there's upward mobility opportunities for the people working in those places? That's a big part of the future. Then there's $5 million set aside for at-risk youth. Again, what programs can we come up with? Mentorships, internships, recreational programs, career guidance programs to help get them on a path to success? Tying into that is something we want to do on truancy. I was amazed. I still learn things every day new, and one of the things I learned was, is our truancy laws in Michigan apply to 16- to 18-year-olds. Did you realize they didn't apply to most of our kids? Does that make any sense at all? No. So let's have a better set of rules and regulations to say, shouldn't all our kids be showing up for school? And if they're not, shouldn't we have some ability to talk to parents about doing something about that? So we're going to look at that question. And actually, I want to thank your state senator. Tanya Shoemaker is one of the people leading the charge. She's helping sponsor legislation looking at truancy. Also, mental health courts. So there's a person you can give direct feedback to, to help work on this issue. So that's a big opportunity. One other area I'm going to mention, because I could go on for a long time, I hate to tell you, there are 34 initiatives in this message, so you can take a nap here, probably, is on prisoner reentry. We've made improvements. Our recidivism rates are coming down. They've improved a reasonable percentage from the 40s to 30-some percent, in terms of coming back within a certain time period. But that's still not good enough. One of the flaws we have with our current prisoner reentry programs is typically they only start helping a prisoner when they're about three months from release. Now think about it. This person's been there, in many cases, a long time. Helping them in the last three months only and figuring out what's going on is not the best answer. So I want to compliment Director Hines from the Corrections Department for starting the concept to say, he wants to start day one when they come in. To say, shouldn't we start having a dialogue about what that eventual reentry may look like? And seeing what we can do to make that percentage go even lower in terms of recidivism. Again, they need to spend their time, they need to be punished appropriately, but when they come back into society, we don't want to just cycle them through again, do we? It's better if they have an opportunity for success, because we all win then, in terms of lower crime, more success for all, and the human costs are way too much to have them keep on going around in that circle. So we've got these three major elements. And again, the one piece I'll overlay again is this concept of data-driven. So one of the things that the state police will be working hard with all our local jurisdictions, our local law enforcement, is can we start working on more and more a common data reporting system, to get real-time, more and more real-time data on where crime is happening and where those issues are. And again, that will be part of the CLEAR group, the Council on Law Enforcement and Reinvention. Another piece that's going to overlay with that, though, is CLEAR has been successful enough, I'm calling for a similar group for fire and for emergency services people, in terms of our first responders. Because it's working so well, going to the model of public safety, why don't we have similar ideas on doing things with fire prevention and emergency services in terms of creating similar groups? Again, and then focusing on data. So this is the start of an initiative that needs to go on for a sustained period of time. There is not one answer to the problem of public safety. As I mentioned, we got 34 initiatives alone, and I can tell you, I actually had to stop. We've got another half dozen or a dozen lined up to fit right into this as it goes to the next level. I'll just mention one, because in some communities, it is a big deal, and that's the issue of scrap metal sales. Too often, scrap metal's going through the system where basically it's being taken, stolen, and sold for cash. So there's improvements all across the board we can do. So I really encourage your participation. Hopefully, this can get you fired up and excited. This is about teamwork and collaboration. And again, that's why I'm happy to be in Kalamazoo today. Not to talk about why the system doesn't work, but why the system does work, but why we can make it work better by working together. That's exciting. So with that, let me stop and just open it up for some questions, because I love that. Let's have some dialogue about this. I think we got a couple people with mics, if you hold up your hand.
Hi, Governor. Thank you for coming to Kalamazoo. What I would like to know is, in one of your 34, because I understand, you said you couldn't tell us about all of them, in one of your 34, are you addressing the issues of the felonies where if you train people, but yet because the state is saying, if you have a felony, you can't work here, that they still cannot be employed to take care of themselves? And that, and the second part of that is that you brought up Goodwill, and they're a great organization. But I've heard you many times talk about, we have got to be training people in fields where they have livable wages. And I hope that in one of your initiatives, that where it's community-based, where people who actually live in the neighborhood are getting those positions, that they are being trained for them. So I hope somewhere that in there are, in one of those 34 addresses felonies, so that the people who are already out here, that they can be able to be employed after they've gone through the trainings. And then second, that those initiatives where you're bringing them in, because if you don't have the community, and if the community isn't working, then you are redoing it. So I'll ask that. Thank you very much.
Sure, and I appreciate that. Your first question on the felony one, we did some reform last year. I signed some legislation to allow people to essentially clear their record in certain circumstances. I believe that's a topic that needs more discussion. It's not specifically in this message, but that is something that we do need to look at, improving certain aspects of that. So if you have ideas, actually, I encourage you to follow up with one of our people and give them your thoughts. The second piece in terms of getting involved in the community and having those jobs there? Absolutely. Again, that's where we're looking for organizations to come forward, and they can be all kinds of organizations. I just wanted to give you a couple illustrations, because I hope we find new organizations that could be creative. I hope that we have good faith-based organizations that might have good ideas about sustainable enterprises that can apply. One of the things, in fact, to show it's not to be limited to historical groups that, because we want to encourage people that know how to do it, that've got a track record. But one element I didn't mention is, we're actually going to add it to business plan competitions. Because we've got all these smart universities with all these students doing these programs, and they hold all these competitions. Most of you may not realize it, but there's competitions going on all the time for like MBA students, all these smart students, and they're always geared at for-profit enterprises, for like startup tech companies and all these kind of ideas. And my idea is, I'm asking the MEDC, and they're going to do this, they're going to create a category for social entrepreneurship, where literally it's to do businesses and to go into neighborhoods and find neighborhood groups and have, hopefully, business students help put together a business plan, idea that can be pitched, and you can get an award and have an opportunity to build some new business that we haven't even thought of. Because I view it as entrepreneurship and innovation. I just, again, my only rule is, is I want it to make at least a buck over time, so it self-sustains. So it's not a one-shot deal, but it can go on and create good jobs. The other thing is, for anyone looking for a job, I encourage them to go to mitalent.org. And again, not everyone has web access, you might have to go to the library, but we have 76,000 open jobs in Michigan today. In a lot of cases, people just need more skills or different skills to be successful. And these don't require college degrees. It's great if we can help someone get a college degree, but, I mean, I've used the illustration of welder over and over again. If you can get in a training program to be a welder, you can get a job in Michigan in about an hour in any corner of Michigan. Other questions? Hi.
Thank you for coming today. My name is Marcy Peake, and I want to thank Public Safety, the men and women who keep our community safe. But I would also like to share a message that as long as we continue to focus on repairing instead of preparing, I don't believe that we'll ever have safety and productivity in our communities. I think that we need to look at adequate and stable school funding, and we also need to broaden our definition of the town when we have town hall meetings. We're not hearing from the folks who need services the most, and therefore, the solutions that we come up with may not be viable and useful for all the community members. So I love data. You mentioned data, and the data that I study looks at illiteracy, it looks at dropout rates, and it looks at the relationship between those things and crime and drug abuse and the incarceration rate. So I hope that those things are taken into consideration in this 34-point plan. Thank you.
Yes, specifically on that, what I'll tell you is, we're getting neighborhood groups involved in the process. That's one of the things I'm asking CLEAR to do, is clearly coordinate with neighborhood groups on their ideas and thoughts, because it needs to get more people involved in the process. Much of what you said, though, is more in our education message and our urban message. And actually, I'm happy to have Harvey Howland. Harvey, why don't you stand up, so people can, we'll put Harvey on the spot. He's our director of urban initiatives. And we're actually hoping to have resources in Kalamazoo at some point in the future from his office, to have that dialogue. And we do go out and do all kinds of different town halls and events. I think, I'm trying to remember, is that next week, we have a major meeting with clergy in one of the, in the Detroit community, where literally I'm going to meet with a wide cross-section of the faith-based community, and I do that on a regular basis, to make sure we're hearing it from all different kinds of groups and organizations, so we can be as responsive as possible. Because we want to respond to all our citizens. You're all my customer. If you really look at it from my point of view, state government's a customer service business. So every person here is my customer, and I want to give you good customer service.
Pete Strazis, Mayor of City of Portage, welcome, Governor. Thank you for recognizing the good work of City of Kalamazoo, the county, and Portage, and the townships, that we have been collaborating for years, and some good work will be coming up. My question, Mr. Governor, relates to your comment about the best way to lower crime is not have it in the first place. You've talked about job creation, and obviously, congratulations on your unemployment numbers coming down. The question I have is that if we can continue this unemployment decline in the state of Michigan, obviously, crime will be going down. I believe those are parallel statistics. What are some of your stats as it relates to your plan moving forward to continue that trend? What are you doing right now about that? And where do you think we're going to be going with unemployment rates moving forward?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mayor. And it's great to have a broad representation of the community here. And it really comes down to more and better jobs is the top priority that I look at, because jobs doesn't solve every problem, but it really is a major contributor in the solution to many, including public safety. Again, they work together. We have to work on public safety to have more jobs and vice versa. So if you look at, the unemployment rate is headed the right way. I believe that's going to continue. Again, from the state government role, my view is, is the role of state government is not to hire all of you. Our role is not to create jobs. Our role is to create an environment where jobs can flourish. And I believe we're doing a really good job of that in terms of having a tax system that's simple, fair, and efficient, that's fairly taxing people, business people, but not overtaxing them, because that was happening before. Regulatory reform, we're getting rid of six regulations for every new one we're adding, while still performing our fiduciary responsibility. And we've done workers' comp reform, unemployment insurance reform. This talent initiative is huge, because the key to long-term success with job creation is, who has the best talent? And the right talent is going to win. And that's where we need to leverage the whole system. Again, getting more people with university degrees, but also, importantly, creating the skilled trade workforce that we really need. Welders, tradespeople, that's going to be just as critically important. And that's where our community colleges and all our training programs come together. So I view it as, I don't like to talk about workforce development. I like to talk about talent. Creating, connecting, and collaborating on talent is our future. So there's a whole series of initiatives going there. My biggest concerns are, the things that are going to hold us back is the mess in Washington and potentially issues that are international, like the situation in Greece and such. But if you look at it, Michigan is finally getting our act together. And we're showing positive progress in reinventing our state. I do have some concerns in Michigan, and to be blunt, it's people bringing up divisive issues and trying to get us to fight with one another. Because right now, we're showing progress by working together. So I believe in being positive, forward-looking, inclusive, and trying to avoid being backward-looking, negative, and divisive. So relentless positive action's my motto. I'm a boring guy, I'm going to stick with it. Other questions?
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Bell, and I serve on the Kalamazoo City Commission. We found that when our crime stats went down, we had finance, we had funding for summer youth employment. In your plan, is there a significant amount of funding that will come back to local municipalities where we can put our young people to work? In Kalamazoo, yes, we have the Kalamazoo Promise, but we know that overwhelmingly, our young people have an interaction with a public safety officer, a police officer, which will lead to arrest and conviction. So is there some funding that can help us put our young people to work when they're not in school?
Great question. That's actually part of that $5 million we identified, is going to the Department of Natural Resources to take leadership, working with local communities. I'll tell you, though, most of that will be going to those four communities this first summer, though. Because the numbers are so dramatically difficult there, that we're going to prioritize that in some fashion. But we're also doing an outreach campaign to say, it's just not about state dollars. We're actually hoping to get the private sector to do public-private partnerships, to join in. As we put dollar resources, will they match us and help contribute dollars in those efforts? So again, that's something that I would encourage your community to be proactive on, because if we can find, we can get broader partnerships going, where it's more than just state government, but we can get other people contributing dollars to but we can get other people contributing dollars to focus in on those kids, it's a great effort. Because again, that's something we need to do.
My name is Bill Fales. I'm an emergency physician at our two excellent hospitals here in Kalamazoo. And for the last eighteen some years, I've been the, had the privilege of being the EMS Medical Director for the county. My question is, I was very glad to hear about the mental health courts you're proposing. I would encourage you to broaden beyond just the mental health courts, the probably secondary-only to substance abuse is, or the problems with mental health. And one of the model initiatives at Kalamazoo Public Safety and the other law enforcement agencies have had, is to do crisis intervention training for our police officers, so that they can de-escalate mental health problems before they turn into a violent incident or result in an ER visit or whatever. But that's, that's, that's in a response mode. If we can put resources into the mental health system to help mitigate the impact of, of mental health problems, it will be a huge benefit to the healthcare system, as well as, I think, the criminal justice system.
No, I appreciate that, and thank you for your service.
A member of MAPS, thank you.
Okay, good. That was, all right. We've got to give him a round of applause there. We got a MAPS. Besides all your great service, doing emergency service work like that is a challenge. To go to your specific question, we're on the same wavelength. I didn't go through the detail, because the most tangible thing we have starting is the mental health courts, in terms of that philosophy near term. But actually, in the message itself, there's a paragraph or so that says, "This is the first step," because I already kicked off something with the Department of Community Health earlier, and I've given them until summertime to come back with a whole series of recommendations about how to work with public health departments, with the counties, with other organizations, on what we can do on mental health to improve that system, to tie into it. Because again, if we can even keep them out from the criminal justice system of the input to where they even show up in court, that's an even better answer. That's just on a different path, but it's on a good path, because I wanted that to be a grounds-up kind of review involving the counties and other jurisdictions, and come up with a list of recommendations there. Because mental health is this huge issue that was just ignored for far too long. And I think, I can see it in your eyes, I think you recognize that, and many of us did, that we, we ended up spending too little on mental health, and not putting the resources the right way together. Because if you don't help people with a mental health issue, where do they end up? They end up in the criminal justice, the correction system, or they end up in homelessness. And those aren't good answers. And so the question is, what we can do to be proactive, to get them the right treatments to allow them to be successful? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Governor. I'm Jeff Patton, and I'm Director of Kalamazoo Community Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services.
Oh, wow.
So I'm very, very, you couldn't have said it any better. But this is a remarkable community. It really is. Not only the crisis intervention training, but also the mental health courts. We have a wonderful judge, that's our mental health court judge. We really need state support behind that to sustain that. Data, we have excellent evaluations behind it. I think it's the only court in Michigan that really has an evaluation behind it. But what I want to say, though, is that this is a community that believes in collaborations. And something else that you have been introducing, and that's integrating behavioral health with, with primary care and the larger health systems. And we have wonderful hospitals, we have wonderful health centers, we have federally qualified health center, I'm seeing the director over there. And we also have wonderful colleges and universities. And one of the things that we're looking at here in Kalamazoo is integrating those various services to make people healthier. And that's part of our economic development strategy. And so as part of that, with our community college, with Western Michigan University, Kalamazoo College, and also with Kalamazoo Community Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, we're really looking at trying to bring all those pieces together to integrate medicine the way that you have proposed, and also the Department of Community Health. So we're hoping that you stand behind us to really support our efforts, because I think that we're looking not only as a state model, but also as a national model here. So I really applaud you in moving forward with your, with your reform efforts.
No, I appreciate that. That's the same path we're on, and I really appreciate your leadership, and it'd be great. We need to make sure we have you connected with Director Dazo and the Community Health people, if you haven't already. Because that's the direction we want to head. When I actually did my message on health and wellness last fall, we did it in Grand Rapids at a place called The Heart of the City, that was just opening, which is an FQHC that's focused on multiple chronic conditions. And I learned a lot. When you actually go to one of these places, it's amazing, when you talk about healthcare management, exactly what you said. It's not about treating one condition, it's about treating a patient, and recognizing that, in many cases, the people coming to a facility, like you're talking about, the kind of people you're treating, quite often may have six to 12 conditions in some fashion that may be overlapping, and how do you best treat that whole person in the right combination? Because it could be mental health issues, it could be obesity, it could be diabetes, it could be a whole series of things. And if you look at it, our traditional system didn't do well, because they'd end up going to all these different specialists, and it was possible, they could actually end up worse off because of the interaction of all this stuff. Usually, they did okay, but we can really treat them by having this focused approach. So that's great. Keep going. Go get them. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, we got...
Governor, one thing that I think can go unmentioned is, is obviously, the continuing proliferation of the methamphetamine problem. And Kalamazoo County has always been one of the leaders in the state in terms of dealing with those issues. We've had multiple officer-involved shootings in the last six months here in southwest Michigan, specifically and directly linked to methamphetamine manufacturing. So is there, and I didn't see it specifically addressed in the plan, but is there any conversations taking place relative to funding of methamphetamine enforcement or anything along those lines?
Yeah, that's an important question, because particularly in this part of the state, the meth issue is a huge issue. And I know it first person, because most people don't recognize, I'm actually a West Michigan person. I'm a gun-like guy. So when you talk about burying Allegan County, Kalamazoo County probably had the largest number, but that's a whole, that's the pocket of meth issues. So this message specifically doesn't have anything identified on meth, but that's something we are tracking. And again, if we can come up with new ideas about how to do a combination teamwork approach of all levels of government, narcotics tends to work pretty well together. But we can improve that, because the meth issue is something that'd be great if we can find two or three breakthrough points to really address it in this fashion, because it's just been continuing far too long in West Michigan. So I appreciate that. That's a real problem.
I think we've met once or twice. Nice to see you. Mark Shupan and my company, Shupan &amp; Sons, and we're in the metals business, but I want to, and I'd love to discuss that, the theft problem. We work with the police here a lot, that's for sure. But what I really wanted to comment was this truancy. We also work with a little girl through Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and this, this comment you made about having truancy laws for 60 and 18-year-olds, when you talk about education and getting jobs and crime, as you know, if the kids can't read by the time they're in third, fourth, you've lost them. And I think anything you could do to strengthen that, I think, would go a long way and have a multiplier effect, and I really appreciate that you have recognized us. Thank you.
No, that is critically important. And again, it's amazing, how many people recognize we didn't have anything for kids under 16? And if you think about it, doesn't that beg common sense? So we need to do something there. I didn't go through the specifics because of time, but a couple of things we are looking at. First of all, and again, this probably is not the geography, we'll pilot this first, we have some pilots going on, but for the Department of Human Services, I've actually asked Director Corrigan to look at having our people move out of their offices more, and actually set up office hours and spend time in the schools and potentially faith-based organizations, if the faith-based organizations want to work with us on that. Because if you think about it, I want to get people, our people more on the front lines, where they can really make a difference and give better customer service. So the question is, is can we set up office hours right in the schools, so parents can come in with their kids, we can hear their issues, to see what we can do to help them be successful, to get them on a better path, a more positive path? That way, instead of saying they have to take one or two buses to go to some state office, or county office, or city office, let's go to them. As part of that also, though, one thing I am asking them to look at is to say, if people are on assistance, they need to get their kids to school, and how we can make that happen. And if they don't care, we'll work with them a lot of different ways, but if fundamentally they stop that, we should be looking at their assistance to deal with it in some fashion. So again, it's not just to say, here's a penalty, but here's a whole system of extra support we want to provide, because we want to create a positive solution for people. We never want to create a negative situation if we can help it. It's really, how do we help them succeed, and at the same time, make it clear, here's the parameters we got to get results in, because if they're not showing up in school, we're going to lose them in terms of situations. And we need to have them have an opportunity for success.
Governor, I'd like to build on what you said about taking the $5 million and taking it to the southeast, as far as what you're doing with youth development, and certainly understand that there's problems and needs, but if we use the same analogy of roads, if we wait until they get that bad, it takes that much more time and effort to be able to be successful. I would hope that you start looking and realize Kalamazoo's innovation and commitment, because we're all here, and think of doing a pilot program with us, because we are a smaller city, a smaller community than what you have in the southeast. Let us have a lead and show others, when you get ready to roll out Tier Two, how to do it. So I hope you'll consider looking at us as a community of what we could do, so we can save the roads and the kids at the same time.
No, I appreciate that. Good marketing. You've got to give this woman, give her a... I mean, that's the fire and passion you want for people in your community, so I really appreciate that. Again, to give you an idea of the numbers, because we had boards up yesterday that showed the numbers on the top 100 communities across the United States. We didn't show all 100, but to give you an idea, the statewide average for violent crime is about 490 to 500 is the number per 100,000 of population. For Flint and Saginaw, they're roughly about 2,200. Detroit and Flint are about, let's see, one's about 1,900 and the other's about 1,800. To give you a point of reference, you're half of that or less, in terms of benchmark. So again, we really need to deal with this issue, because I believe it affects all Michiganders, regardless of where we live. We do need to jump on these issues and go after it, but I appreciate that, too, because again, there is merit to your position, and I don't ignore it. So we'll look at a lot of different things. But this is something to really emphasize, that's where having the data really says, this is a serious problem, folks, that we need to do something about. Okay, we got any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Governor, thank you for being here today. I'm Richard Fuller, the Sheriff of Kalamazoo County. I appreciate your efforts that you're taking on the other side of the state that do help the rest of the state of Michigan at the same time. It's a little hard for people to recognize that sometimes, because we hear of so much being spent in one area, when we recognize that there are over 3,000 officers minus today than there were years ago. One of the things I want to mention is that in Kalamazoo County, we do work in a cooperative, very close, tight-knit community of law enforcement. You'll see behind you the four police cars today, there are at least eight other agencies that would be representative of this meeting today, if this garage was big enough. And so we are all partners. What I'm looking for is information from you about the ongoing commitment we've already made to partner in all these different initiatives. Looking for help for our ongoing initiatives that we already do, and want to make sure that we don't have to create something new, just to get some extra money to help with some of these things.
Sure, I'm happy to respond. And actually, I did notice the cars when I came in. I thought that was great. That's a sharp car.
Thank you.
The other thing I noticed is, the Ford dealer in town should be pretty happy. But it's great to see the cars and that people are working together, and that's a big deal. And one of the things is, that we're actually clear on, is the importance of common communications and radio systems and dispatch. I understand that you're co-located for dispatch for a number of the organizations, and I appreciate that, as a step on that progress path. To go to your point, though, about recognizing all the work that's already been done, is when we built what's called the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, which is the replacement to revenue sharing, we put in best practice criteria, and it involved accountability and transparency, putting metrics up, dashboards, measurements, just like we're doing for the state. It involved collaborations, to really encourage collaborations, and then it talked about cost-sharing, cost-management, about healthcare costs and how we had to do better there. We clearly give credit for prior work that people have done, because again, we didn't want to discourage that, we actually wanted to recognize and celebrate it. The other piece, though, so we do that for the bulk of the dollars, but we did earmark some piece, that $5 million last year that we're increasing this year. And it really is to encourage entrepreneurship and innovation in government, and it works. We got about $23 million in applications last year for that $5 million. So my view was, is, these are probably a lot of good proposals, let's try to fund as many as possible, and really recognize that success. So to the degree, keep doing what you're doing. It is being recognized for the bulk of the piece, but I hope you can come up with new ideas, what's the next level you want to go to, and apply, so we can help do that, and how we can help save money in many different ways. So we're encouraging those things. I mean, one illustration is, is on a whole different front, the first award we gave was actually to Grand Rapids, Lansing, and Flint, to jointly process income tax returns. And they got a half million dollars, they're going to save a couple million dollars, but there's 15 other cities plus that could join that program. So there's all those kind of programs that we're going to put all on the web, so you can brag and show off all the great things you're doing, and other people can learn from that, and vice versa. And I view it as a great way to really create an environment where Lansing's not telling you what to do, we're just a great partner to say, if you've got a great idea, how do we support you? And I don't think that was always the approach you got from Lansing. Because I've been there, I've been to meetings where people go, we're the state government, and we're here to help, and you roll your eyes back in your head. Because it's to be much more proactive. So, thank you, and we are, we are recognizing that, and that's part of being here today, is to say, public safety or collaborations, go get them. I'm here to show off Kalamazoo today, right? You guys are doing good stuff. I think we got time for one more. Anybody else got a last question? We're going round two. Oh, that's good, though.
I actually have two questions.
Okay.
You talked about the Michigan prisoner reentry. I'm, I'm working with a man who just got released from 29 years, and he maxed out, so he does not qualify for prisoner reentry services. Do you have a plan on what we can do to hook him up with navigators and support services that will help him be successful, so that he doesn't, you know, return back to the prison system? He's currently homeless, looking for housing and job. Matter of fact, he even gets unemployed, because he worked 11 years in prison, the last 11 years. But he does not, because he's not on parole or probation or anything, he does not qualify for ADNPRI services. The second question is around policy. In the city of Kalamazoo, even our Kalamazoo County, we no longer ask the question in our application, having been convicted, because we allow people a fair chance to make it on the process. Is there any policy that's coming down the pipeline from the state that's addressing that to businesses, to say, we really want to open up this equal and fair opportunity for people to become employed? So you have to consider, at least allowing people a fairly good opportunity to be in the application process.
Yeah, your second question, that's something that I haven't seen come through yet. I've looked at it some, but to be open, we've been busy on a lot of other things, but I'm open-minded on looking at those kind of questions, and I would hope that should come through the legislature in terms of that. Because that's an important question to have a good dialogue about. So I view it as, let's have a public discussion on that kind of topic. And your first one, I'd be happy to see if there's ways we can help. If you just want to, if you've got that information, to pass it on to the gentleman that was getting you the mic, that we can keep track of that and try to follow up. Because again, the Michigan prisoner reentry program actually has done some nice things, but it didn't go far enough. And I'll give you one illustration of something we're looking at pretty hard, because again, in, within the system, that I learned from the director, because our people are being very proactive about bringing up these ideas. They're focused on public safety first, to make sure these people stay locked up for our protection, and that they don't go out earlier at the wrong time. But within that context, when they come out, we want to do all we can to help them be successful. And one thing that we had been doing, that we still have a lot of work to do on, is we've actually been transferring prisoners around too much, where literally, a prisoner would be in some training program, be working on a, a program or something that could give them a skill, and all of a sudden, they'd be transferred to another facility that might not even have that program. So all the time they spent there was actually wasted. And that has been going on for a long time, and so that's something we want to look at a more rational program of how to address it. it. So we're actually helping them be successful within the programs we're trying to encourage them to get. So there's a lot of improvement, and so it's an important topic. Well, I really appreciate your time. I want to thank the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety for hosting this. This is great. I want to thank all the jurisdictions for this wonderful display of equipment, and